Halloween Door. Item number two, Declaration of Any Conflict of Interest. Does any Counselor see? Go ahead, Counselor.
I may have a conflict of interest in regards to the shark scramble. The shark scramble request for grant funding. I'm not 100% sure, but I'm going to declare it anyway. And then, yep.
Item number three, if you approve of an agenda, was there any additions?
Can we just add the event policy? Just, I just want a quick update on where we are with that. Please, and thanks.
Six point six, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
So, nothing else? Then we'll move on to item number four, presentation.
I don't think we have our motion heard from. We don't do that.
We don't do motions. Item number four is Presentation 4.1. The new Cape for Shoe website reveal. I'll hand it off to the CIO.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, we have with us today from YASTA Neil McKenzie and Malcolm Seboyer. And Malcolm worked for the municipality of Yarmouth as an NSCC student this spring. He did a five-week work term for us. And his project was to redevelop the Cape for Shoe website. The main driving force behind having a new website was to build in mobile functionality. So, the previous website didn't have up-to-date bits and pieces. I don't know if that's the right technical term. So, Malcolm is with us today to launch the new website for Committee of the Whole and Council. He's going to walk you through it. I'll draw your attention to the screens. And he's going to walk you through some of the elements of the new website. So, I'll hand it over to Malcolm.
Perfect. Thank you, Victoria, for bringing this a little closer. And Mike's already on it with the TV reveal. So, there's our brand-new website. I just wanted to start the meeting by thanking everybody for giving me the opportunity to work on the Cape for Shoe website. It's an incredibly important piece of our tourism industry and our community. A little backstory for me is I moved here nine years ago, and I didn't know anything about Yarmouth. And at the time, my roommate and I decided to go to Cape for Shoe Lighthouse. And I was blown away, and I've loved it ever since. I worked for five years as a web developer and then decided to go back to school. And last summer, had the great opportunity to come onboard with Yarmouth Acadian Shores. And I'm back again. And this summer, we've, we're ready to launch the new website for Cape for Shoe. So, starting out, we've got an incredible stargazing timelapse banner. Really engaging, grabs the user's eye. Any kind of points you wanted to grab it?
I'll jump in anywhere I feel I need to.
Perfect. I think it's important because it shows more than just a lighthouse. It shows the trail and the star, the stars are beautiful. It's, you want to go there, not just during the day, not just to look at it, but I could see now, you know, we want to push this as a destination to go no matter the time of day, no matter the season even, so. To start at the top of the website, just move over here, we've got our menu that will click and open to go through all the new pages. But before we go any further, we'll start on the homepage. So, first off, we have a block of, when I refer to block, I guess, just a section of the website, more or less. A section to show different experiences available at the website. Our first primary one is the Lightkeeper Sea Feast, a brand-new experience this year at the lighthouse. And we can click through to see more, such as the stargazing as mentioned, stunning sunsets. And they all have buttons that can either link to booking or learning more about that particular experience. Sure. Just go there. For example, the Lightkeeper Sea Feast. We use the same image that's on the cover of the 2019 Activity Guide, too, for familiarity for tourists, so that when they see the guide and then they see this image, they'll have a connection of where it is. So, the Lightkeeper Sea Feast has all the new information about the product, what it includes, the dates, time, and price, and how you can book by calling or emailing.
No, actually, I'm pulling that site up.
So, the new website, capeforshoe.com. And we can play. It is active now, yep. We'll be doing a promotional piece around it tomorrow and Friday. Yep. For example, at the end of the video, it did say Cape for Shoe Light, but that will be set up with a redirect to the new website. And going forward, we'll be using capeforshoe.com.
It was important to focus on as short a URL as possible. So, Cape for Shoe, when we looked at all the social media channels and looked at all the places where users were already generating content around Cape for Shoe, they were, the most commonly-used term was Cape for Shoe, not Cape for Shoe Light or Light Station. Those were being shared as well, but the most common use and the highest number of people were using the words Cape for Shoe. So, we felt aligning the URL with the content and the verbiage that people are already using was important, so that's really why we did that.
So, if we scroll back down, our next section of the website brings up the importance of social media and where people are sharing their content. As Neil just mentioned, a lot of people are using, referring to it as going to Cape for Shoe, and they're sharing content using hashtag Cape for Shoe on Instagram primarily, Facebook, and Twitter. So, we've got all the buttons to the Cape for Shoe social media pages and the TripAdvisor listing. So, this gallery is all created by people that have visited Cape for Shoe Lighthouse. We call it, we refer to it as user-generated content. So, they've taken this, these photos and posted them. Pardon me, just scroll up a little bit. So, we can also click on the photos to bring them up larger. So, for example, this picture was taken by a username S. Smitty, and he must have been using a drone to capture this angle.
So, the really important thing with user-generated content, you know, content that others are creating, is that Cape for Shoe isn't required, certainly, there should be a goal with Cape for Shoe to be constantly investing in creating new content, but also utilizing this great content that's already being created by users that are going to Cape for Shoe. One of the things that YASTA has done with our website, with yarmouthacadianshores.com, is invest in this program, which is called CrowdRiff specifically, which allows us to harness the user-generated content and actually repurpose it for, to keep traffic on our site and keep that engagement up. With Yarmouth Acadian Shores, it's increased our engagement and our time on-site, which is important. We want people to stay on our website as long as possible, because that leads to conversions, which in this case, a conversion would be somebody finding this website and then clicking on the Book Now button, going off and then booking an experience on the Lightkeeper Sea Feast, or deciding, okay, we're going to go there with the kids tomorrow, and they actually click on the Learn More button. We want them to share that, so. It's pretty innovative that Cape for Shoe is doing this. It's something I think you should be proud of. There's only a few other destinations in the province that are utilizing CrowdRiff, Destination Cape Breton, Destination Halifax, Yarmouth Acadian Shores, of course, and I believe Tourism Nova Scotia is going to be integrating this into their website as well. So, you're kind of leading the way on that, and the results have been proven that having user-generated content on your website is going to lead to more engagement and more time on-site. And also, these user-generated contents, this content can also lead to more click-throughs and call-to-actions and things like that, so. I think it's important to continue to invest in growing those galleries. So, Malcolm has put those galleries through all the, all the different pages. You'll see them as he demonstrates them, but just wanted to clearly state how valuable that is to have that kind of content on there, so.
Definitely incredibly valuable. And we've talked a lot about putting the website through the visitor's lens, and I think it's incredibly authentic, because all of these photos, you know, they're not staged, you know, they're not set up with a whole bunch of photo equipment. It's really an authentic, in-the-moment shot. It was beautiful, you know, little, maybe three- or four-year-old walking the trail, and that's an authentic experience that is captured right in the moment and shared and could encourage others to, to go. Just scroll down a little bit more. Our next section has three, three sections that are both linkable to some of the highlighted experiences at Cape for Shoe, such as the nearby beaches, the trail, the Lee Ferriksen Trail, and the Keeper's Kitchen On-Site Restaurant. A little note on this block is the subtleties to the municipality's color scheme with the blue, green, and red. So, that's kind of a nice little hint in there. These also, as I was saying, they link off to separate pages. So, for example, if we click on one, local beaches near Cape for Shoe, highlights Johns Cove and False Harbor Beach, and has its own separate CrowdRiff gallery, just with beach pictures, beach picture, sorry. And you can click Load More to see more photos. So, we can highlight the beaches as another experience. People might want to go to the beach, then go get something to eat, and then walk the trail, and it's a whole experience, the whole Cape. We can tie it together.
Quick question. So, each one of those pictures has other pictures, like things you go to?
For example, so, if we click on, let's say, this photo here, it will just show one photo.
Okay.
If you go to the user, they may have posted more.
Okay.
But you can see some of the highlighted photos.
Okay, thank you.
All these galleries, too, are manually added, so we're going to actually monitor all the CrowdRiff, all the social media posts that we can, and manually add the pictures that we want to, so that it doesn't allow anyone to take a picture that's, you know, bad lighting or, you know, blurry. We don't want, we want to highlight the best and the best of the photos.
Yes.
So, if we go back to... Oops. So, after the three link blocks, we have a section with the Google Map listing for Cape for Shoe, and a section of how to arrive. So, we can increase traffic by showing you how you can get here, by the ferry, how to drive. If we go down and click on one of the dots here, it will rotate to how do you arrive by car. So, you can take the 101 or take the 103, then with directions. And the last one is how you can arrive by air. On a mobile device, you'd be able to use your finger to swipe back and forth on this section. It has links off to Halifax Stanfields for booking purposes. If you want to try and do a charter flight into Yarmouth Airport, sorry, you can do that.
Believe it or not, there are visitors finding their way there in spite of the current situation with the ferry. There's, I think I had seen some stats, or, sorry, I was presented with some stats yesterday on the first month of operation at Cape for Shoe, and you're, you've exceeded almost 1,000 visitors. Many of them are from overseas, Germany, or they have flown in from Europe or the UK. Many have driven into the province, obviously, and locals as well, so. It's quite good that that is actually happening, and that's kind of shows why we actually need to actually tell people how to get there. As locals, we kind of think, everybody should know where this is, but from a visitor's lens, it's really important to make sure we tell people how to find their way there.
Yep. Yeah, like, they're not familiar with the area, so they would need a little assistance on how to get to Cape for Shoe. So, we wanted to make it as easy as possible for a visitor. That leads into a next section solely around...
Would you be able to have a map of just at the end of the 101 and 103 and have a little map for Golden to highlight it?
I think I know what he means. When you click on by road, the map on the left would change.
Right. We could... Yep, we could look into that for sure. As mentioned, the ferry, so this is a specific block on getting to the Bay Ferry's website, on how to book an experience from Maine onboard the Cat Ferry to Yarmouth. Me and Neil were talking, it's important to build relationships with our partners that are already established, the cat being one of the most important and vital to our region. So, for example, you can click on Book Now, and that would go to the ferries.ca website. Our next to last section on the homepage is directly from TripAdvisor, testimonial section, highlighting visitors' experiences and what they've said about the lighthouse on TripAdvisor. So, for example, this user from Palm Coast, Florida, said, "Great lighthouse with a million-dollar panoramic view right at the tip of the peninsula. Worthwhile trip just for this." So, that's a really nice comment that we can then leverage on the website to show this is a place that you'd like to go to. We can click through, currently, we have three, but we can add and update them as we want. "Very easy to get to from Yarmouth and not far away. Beautiful views all around and quite interesting history. Walk the Lee Ferriksen's Trail and learn more. Beautiful, from Massachusetts." It also allows us to go to TripAdvisor and see where our visitors are coming from and help build that data even further, so that we understand where visitors are coming from. And the very bottom of the website, or footer of the site, has a kind of stylized Cape for Shoe Lighthouse graphic using the municipality's logo there, links to further pages, and then links to our partner websites, such as Yarmouth Acadian Shores, Tourism Nova Scotia, a link back to the homepage of Cape for Shoe, and the municipality of the District of Yarmouth. And again, just to highlight that social media importance, we've got links there and a link to the hashtag Cape for Shoe Instagram feed. So, if we click on that, we would go to all the pictures that have been posted with that specific hashtag.
Go ahead, Counselor.
What about, what about the movie that was made there? Or wouldn't, would that fit in there or not?
It's going to be, I had some initial discussions with the Atlantic Film Festival regarding the movie. The movie hasn't been released yet. So, until the movie's released, I wouldn't advise, I would advise at that point trying to determine how you would leverage it. I think the lion's share of the value you've had from the movie has been the 133% increase in room nights sold in April last year, and the other, and all the economic benefits that happened from the movie related to that. It can be a challenge to leverage it, and I'm hearing some initial things about the movie, that the movie is going to be quite an arts film, an artistic film, not necessarily, and that it may even have an R-rating in North America. So, it could be challenging to leverage it as a, but there may be people that will come for that purpose, but it might be a difficult thing to do from a marketing perspective to leverage it. Yep. Although we want, I think the goal should be to keep trying to get more movies and more productions to come and shoot in the region, because we see, really see the value of that. Obviously, there's a huge impact that way, so.
I think once material is released on the movie, we could include it on the website in some fashion, perhaps about the history of the light, that a movie was filmed here in 2018. But until then, we'll just wait, wait until the movie's released and...
That can be content, too, that your, your staff that are there now at the light can share with visitors if they ask, you know? So, they're already mentioning things about history and geology and the other things that are happening at the lighthouse. To me, that's more content that they can share with visitors if they ask.
All right, next, we can start, we'll dive through. Sure. We'll go to Experiences. So, the Experiences page on the new Cape for Shoe website kind of highlights all the high-level experiences that we've built so far. We've got a nice capturing image, everybody smiling, taking a selfie, drinking some wine, so highlighting all the things you can do. Whoops, there we go. All these will then link to their respective pages. So, for example, we'll go to the Keeper's Kitchen. We've got a little short snippet about what the Keeper's Kitchen is, their hours of operation, and another CrowdRiff gallery. I'd like to thank Chris and Jaclyn. They went out last, two weeks ago, and took a lot of images of the Keeper's Kitchen. And those, we can click on, and to see in a larger, larger format.
If you don't have lunch plans today, might be a good idea. Go try that.
Nice turkey panini and chips. Beautiful day for it. And we've got a button to see their menu. There we go. So, a visitor can see what's on the menu at the Keeper's Kitchen to kind of get a sense of what they can be in for when they go, maybe plan out their lunch or supper.
Malcolm, just a reminder to put the disclaimer on that page.
Right. So, a disclaimer that the menu can change.
And pricing.
Yep. And we'll go to, so this is kind of, the About Cape for Shoe page is a bit of a history around the lighthouse, how Samuel de Champlain landed and named the area Cat for Shoe in 1604. And kind of high-level information about the lighthouse itself, again, how to get there through our active fishing community, because really, the whole experience of going to Cape for Shoe is the fishing chantees and the authentic working community is very important. And any other pages?
Really, unless they'll be conscious of their time.
Yep. I guess we'll open it up to any other questions, any other pages you'd like to view so far.
Counselor question?
Hey, Mr. Warden. YASTA, you've done a great job on this with page to date, and certainly, there's a lot of information that is available there for potential tourism and even for potential locals to see exactly what's going on in that area. You were talking about the visitors that have come there from away so far. I've talked to people from Poland.
Really?
You know, they live in the, in the Yarmouth area, and they invited friends of theirs from Poland to come over, who are thinking about settling down in the Yarmouth area. Also, met the people from North Bay who are in the Keeper's Kitchen and enjoying, enjoying the snack before they moved on, and they're really impressed with what's going on. And lastly, well, there's quite a few more, but this one was pretty interesting, too. I met a family from, from, he's a dentist from up in the Taganway that moved here, and he brought his family from India with him, and they were down visiting the area, and they had, they had lots of good words to say about it, right? So, that was, so I think for the very short time we've been here and with the boat not being run in yet, I think it's a very positive direction that you guys are doing, and I'm certainly looking for more, more activity as we go along and more updates. Thank you.
Thanks. Is there any other questions or concerns from Counselors at this time? Sorry. Counselor Durkey.
Malcolm and Neil, congratulations yet again, Malcolm, because you worked on the original, so you have all the information. This looks absolutely beautiful. I, it's so attractive, and yeah, congratulations. I think, I think it's, it's going to really grab visitors' attention, so, thank you. It's beautiful.
Counselor, can I hear?
Yes, I'll hear those comments. Wonderful job in, in the use of technology and the, and the ability to pull the, pull the photos and stuff from, from, from the public's fantastic. Having said that, are, how are you, with the, with the interruption of ferry service, how are you working, are you working any of that through the website, or is that just something we're not talking about? In the website, is it wise to do anything like that? And furthermore, what do you know about what's going on with, with hoteliers and those types of folks in terms of coping with the, with the interruption of the service?
Well, I think there's a call to action on this website to go to the ferries.ca, which will clearly inform anyone about disruptions in the ferry service. So, if they were to find their way to this site and then they go to ferries.ca because they're inspired to visit, they would, they would be, they would be enlightened as to what schedules would be available for them on that site. So, I don't think we, I wouldn't advise putting that content on this site unless it's, unless the season is completely canceled, then I think maybe we can have another discussion at that point. At this point, from my perspective, I'm still being informed that July 18th is still, that will be the next hurdle we have to overcome, so we'll either have a go, no-go at that point. We've, from a YASTA perspective, and not dis-specific to Cape for Shoe, but from our perspective, we have some plans in place that we intend on trying to deploy as a stopgap after the 18th, if, depending on what happens. But most of our marketing still is entrenched in the traditional markets that we've been in, which is New England area and all northeast, Ontario, Quebec, and Nova Scotia. But we have some plans to try to remedy the challenges we're all now facing. The hotel operators certainly have had to, had some challenges, and, but YASTA's working closely with them to try to, again, try some stopgap measures, certainly after the 18th as well, so. One thing I can mention to you is, we, YASTA has part-time staff that we use on the Cat Ferry in the Visitor Information Center, so we've shifted them to the Fundy Rose to operate through Digby. I've been advised that approximately 50% of the visitors who are being rerouted because of the disruption in the cat are actually choosing to use the Fundy Rose, and so that's still an opportunity for us, certainly. So, us being on the ship there, we've kind of boosted a little bit of our content in St. John's in New Brunswick, and also have staff full-time on the Fundy Rose seven days a week, so, which we didn't have last year. So, it's kind of a, those are some of the tactics we're using to try to mitigate the disruptions.
Guess we'll go to Counselor Ball. Go ahead, Counselor Ball.
Do you have brochures for the lighthouse?
There is a tray card, I think, that was developed. I haven't seen, I saw the final design before I went on vacation, and I assumed it was, it's probably done, but so, we're very close to being done.
Yep, so, they're, they're the long skinny rack cards that we had developed, and Jennifer, our lead out at the lighthouse, she's looking after the production of them. And Jennifer, our lead out at the lighthouse, she's looking after the production of them and making sure they're at the VIC and around town.
Because there's, most people from away, from the States and from Europe, that are at Trout Point Lodge, when I talk to them, I ask them, "Have you been to the lighthouse in Yarmouth?" They don't even know anything about it.
Okay, so I can just send Jennifer an email and she can pass some to you to take there? Is that okay?
I'll ask, I'll ask the owners if I can put some brochures there.
They have our guides. Yeah, I'm sure.
Counselor Cunningham, go ahead.
Yes, so I guess this is a follow-up comment. We talked a little bit about the ferry service and so forth. Is there anything, and that is good certainly, that we have some, you've been thinking this through and trying to react to certainly the interruption. But having said that, is there anything you need from this council to support that work? I mean, you've got something in mind for the 18th, one way or the other, right? Is there any additional resourcing, anything that you can think of that certainly, and not to put you on the spot immediately, but I'm thinking this council are very, very supportive of the community around this issue. So anything, or even, you know, additional advocacy we could do or anything that we can do to, I guess, aid the situation?
Well, I think staying positive is key, first thing, first, because we don't want this to spiral into, you know, negativity. There's enough negativity around the service when it's actually doing great, you know, doing what it's supposed to be doing. So I think avoiding negativity would be key. Secondly, I really appreciate that offer. I intend to, I have a meeting scheduled with the Hotel Association next week where we actually vet applications for events that are happening. And I'm sure that the ferry will obviously be a huge part of that meeting. And they'll be looking to me to actually provide them with some options to boost some marketing efforts probably in the health act area. So those are some other tactics we're looking at and if there was an opportunity for partnering on that, I'll be sure to come back and reach out for sure. But right now, it's, we do have budget, we're just kind of shifting, you know, Modi has supported YASTA already through, and our marketing plans for this year. Again, a lot of it was, has been planned since October to be in our traditional markets and being deployed. But we're able to shift some things like keyword searches, some Google stuff, some Facebook display ads and things, and also maybe even some out-of-home marketing that you might see us do in health act area, which we don't normally do, so.
Was there any further questions? Just that?
Just one, if that's okay. So I'd like to thank Malcolm for his service to the municipality as a student of NSCC and a graduate of NSCC this year. We actually had two students working with us, one in IT and Malcolm worked with me and Neil on this project. And I would also like to give a tip of the hat to Malcolm. Malcolm received an award from NSCC this year for his outstanding academic performance, so congratulations and thanks for choosing Modi as your work site.
Thank you.
Okay, on that note, if no further questions from council, I have a couple. The website, beautiful, fantastic, it draws me in. But being from an industry that always wants to promote itself, I always want more, so I have to advertise more. So as much as you've done this year or at this time, the mind should always be working, what can I do to improve it? It's like car dealerships, they advertise, superstores, grocery stores, they all do that. I would like to see you to have a vision or that YASTA or Modi has a vision of what can I add in five months' time, four months' time to make this even better, to make more people want to come? And/or how do I improve it to the people of the US to come across on the ferry? I don't know, that's not a part, I don't know if it's a part of the municipality of Yarmouth's job to do or YASTA's job to do of promotion, but as Counselor Cunningham stated, what else can we do? YASTA does a lot and I appreciate it, Neil, they go above and beyond. But Modi has to also step up to assist you, I believe, in promoting, we want to, we should be trying to promote ourselves, Modi, more through YASTA, through the website. Sitting here, I really like the tagline, "A light like no other." I'm going to start using that when I'm away and I announce where I'm from and I'm going to be putting that out there. But I was also thinking while I was reading that and you were making your presentation, the Yarmouth Light or the Cape for Shu Light is a unique lighthouse. No other lighthouse anywhere is of that shape, that design and so on. Most all lighthouses are the six-sided buildings and so on, Peggy's Cove and so on. But this here is a unique, and that would be a word that I would put out there because there is people that want something different. So the word "unique," but I think you've done an excellent job. It's very, very interesting and so on. But as good as you are, always keep thinking of something a little better, okay? I'm really pushing you, really pushing you.
I think some of the, some of the work that you're hinting at is currently being done and I believe your CIO can advise you on some other plans that Modi has certainly to inform that work. But the little things, so like, you know, collecting data on the type of visitors that are coming and where they're coming from will enable you to, which is what's happening now with your staff, they're doing a really good job of doing that. They're harvesting information from visitors through their interactions. So you and I are out there and, you know, I welcome you and then the first thing I say to you is, if I was a staff person there, I would say, "Well, so how did you find your way here? Where are you from?" And that's just general everyday conversation, but now I have that piece of information. So now I know if you're from Germany or you're from Massachusetts or wherever you're from, and over a year, we'll have a picture of where our market is, which will enable you to then target that market more refined, right? It's collecting data, it's investing in content, it's doing a lot of the things you're doing already, so, yeah.
Well, you're already thinking it.
We're always looking ahead.
I like it. Whether it was you guys or my CIO or our CIO that was thinking it.
Team effort. It's always a team effort.
On that note, Malcolm and Neil, thank you very much for the presentation. It was very, very enjoyable.
Thank you very much.
Item number five is Business Horizon from the Minutes 5.1. Town of Yarmouth requests for a meeting, governance and/or administration of municipal planning activities. I had that letter and they're looking for the Chair of PAC. The Warden and the CIO to meet with their representatives to have an open discussion and so on. And I guess we've brought it here before, counselors, to kind of get your input, your thoughts as we try to move forward. So the floor is open for any discussion?
Mr. Warden?
Okay. Counselor Allen, go ahead.
Well, what I'm seeing here is just a request for an informal meeting. And I believe communication is key to just about everything. I don't personally, in my opinion, I don't see any harm in meeting. And if there's any chance we can make some things better in our area, I say we gotta, we gotta look at it. So my opinion would be, I don't, I personally, I don't have a problem with an informal meeting between our CIO and Mayor, Warden and, I think, you know, we work closely on a lot of things, so communication's key.
Was there any, or Kate, I'm sorry, Counselor Cunningham?
I'd agree 100% with Counselor Allen's comments. They're, seems very, very logical. We do that for all the reasons he's talked about already, so. Yeah, and again, we've got that whole issue of, that's one small part, but I think it's a positive step forward. But again, I've advocated for this. I think, I think we should be looking with the other units to do a study on the whole issue of governance. So this is, this is one small part that we can start off with and see where it goes. But we should be looking at the governance issue and seeing what we can do with that moving forward because it's, we, the lion's share, I think, of what we're going to be doing moving forward. We're going to be doing projects in the municipality of Yarmouth. Yarmouth's going to be doing its own projects and Argyle's going to have its own projects. But the fact is, we share, we share an interest in some of the major regional projects, more and more as time goes on. We've got the airport, Mariner Center and certainly, you know, the ferry service, the terminals. So these are all, all big, big projects that we share and we need to talk about that sooner rather than later.
Thank you. Counselor Durkey?
I couldn't agree more. I think this is really important to start with regional planning. And I know that's the direction that municipal affairs wants us to go. And again, in looking at consolidating and the direction that we move in the future and decisions that we have to make on some of these big projects, I think this is a fantastic start.
Was there any further comments and so on? And I take it the consensus of the committee would be that the CIO, the Warden and the Chair of PAC set up a meeting then with them? Is that the feeling of the Deputy Warden? Go ahead.
I agree that with Counselor Allen that we should at least talk. But where these, where these talks go to, I'm not sure. However, I do believe that an open dialogue should be started. As you can see here in the letter, that I have attended on occasion their Planning Advisory Committee meetings. The main reason being, the first, one of the times that I attended is because there was talk about possible plans in Bunkers Island and I also brought forward to each and every one of you in one of our council agendas a collared report. It's possible partnerships that we could do with the planned expansion or beautification of the town's water street, which we could also include. Just want to be, make sure that at this time that it doesn't go too far. I just think a discussion, preliminary discussion would be in order and then I'll bring back a report along with the Warden and CIO and see where we go from there. There may be room for collaboration more than what we're doing. And Counselor Trevor Cunningham, as he stated, has been, always been an advocate of moving forward with something like this. And this is a small step, I think, that we could take to just see where it goes.
Consensus and just direction and for the CIO to get in touch with their CIO to see where we can align a meeting and timelines and so on. Okay, thank you. Item number six is Business 6.1. Email of concern from Yarmouth residents, the deer population. This comes from a May 22 meeting. You have that in your package and so on. And it's an interesting read and so on. And I don't know where or what exactly the municipality, other than getting hold of natural resources, so go ahead.
So the minutes from the May 22 meeting indicate that the Deputy Warden had requested that this come back forward for further discussion. So the discussion around what's happening with the deer population and some of the challenges that are occurring, I was given to understand from the Deputy Warden, and I'm sure he'll speak, that there could be issues that Modi may have concerns about beyond what's happening in the town of Yarmouth, some observations he has around the district as a whole. So he was the one who requested it come back forward, so I'm not exactly sure what elements of the discussion he wanted to raise.
Deputy Warden, go ahead.
The reason why I asked for this back is because in this letter, the last paragraph, and I'll read it off, "I'm requesting that your council address this issue due to problems with growing crops, loss of shrubbery, road accidents with deer, the extensive feeding of apples and carrots and the lessening number of hunters. Send is illegal to shoot to the town and the fact that deer know no municipal boundaries. It will take requests to DNR from both municipal units to accomplish any action." So there's a number of issues of why possibly the deer has been invading our, more our urban areas rather than out in the rural population. There's been talk of, there's something, there's some pressures that the deer have not had, which a lot of people out in the country have seen is the increase in the coyote population. If you can all remember, maybe 20 years ago, there was no coyotes. They're just looking for a safe space. She's absolutely correct when she's talking about extensive feeding of apples and carrots. There's been quite a business built over the years in that regard. We see a lot of local businesses in the area that sell these deer carrots. Maybe we should have a talk with an official, a DNR who deals with wildlife to see if there's anything that the municipality could be doing or should be doing. I do realize that there is, this is a provincial issue in my opinion, where DNR actually takes it over. I don't want to go as far as saying that businesses and stuff can't sell deer apples. I do believe that a ban on feeding deer is going too far as well. There's a lot of issues that could be talked about. I'm really not sure where to go with this. Maybe it's time that Municipal District Yarmouth writes a letter to Department of Natural Resources and have a representative come down and possibly talk about a solution, start. Maybe no, a ban on shooting bucks and going after does. I don't know. I do know that DNR has all those stats and statistics on the health of the deer population. Maybe it's because we as the human rights are encroaching more on their territory where we're seen to be building out more in rural areas, that they're running out of habitat and so they're just adapting to their new reality. I don't know. Maybe, like I said, I don't know. Maybe it's time to talk with an official from DNR who specializes in wildlife.
Good point. Counselor Cunningham, go ahead. Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Okay, thanks. I agree with Counselor John Cunningham totally. I think we should invite a DNR representative in. And we can ask with the eye to, because in the letter it's saying, you know, letters are required to move forward and all this type of thing, so I'd like to get some of those types of information as well as, I mean, I would think that it's largely a provincial issue through the Department of Natural Resources. So maybe they can give us maybe an outline of the current, you know, state of affairs in terms of legislation, regulation, that type of thing around deer population hunting, deer control. And at that point, once we become more informed, we may or may not elect to take further action, right? So I hear the residents, it's a concern of many residents. On the other side of the issue, I guess lots of people do enjoy deer, maybe, and watching deer and so forth. So I think, I think just we need to be more informed. So I'd agree with Counselor Cunningham that we should start by having some additional information brought to us before we form any opinions or take any action.
Good point. Any other comments from any of the counselors? This is an ongoing issue, I know, in the town of Truro and so on. And probably unbeknownst, there's probably issues across Nova Scotia and a lot of the towns, but maybe not as bad as it is in Yarmouth and in Truro and so on. I think there's, as the counselor, as the Deputy Warden stated, the population coyotes and so on, but also there's a milder winters and deer aren't dying off like they used to and so on. And there's fewer hunters, I believe, Counselor Cunningham, I believe, in that respect. I don't know what the solution would be and I don't think that probably DNR has a solution because if they did, I believe that would be enacting in Truro at this time. And Truro has a major, major issue. Town of Yarmouth is bad, but Truro really has an issue up there.
Town Yarmouth is bad, but Truro really has an issue up there. So if they had a solution, but I think it's a good idea to have them come in so they can hear that we do have some concerns and so on, in our own area. So the direction would be for staff, consensus for staff, to get in touch with DNR and try to set up a presentation or a meeting with them and so on.
So if I could just confirm then, so the ask would be to have them present us with information on the health and the activity of the herd, what management techniques are being employed, and what's the strategy for managing an urban presence, kind of? Yeah?
Yeah, okay. That's consensus. Thank you. 6.2. Violence in the workplace. Policy V-1068-19. You have that in your package, counselors? Was there any comments? It's quite a long, quite a long read, and everything that was, I believe, to the CAO that was changed is highlighted in yellow, or added, I should say.
That's right. So when the committee, the whole, looked at this policy the last time, we all had concerns around how to properly manage an inquiry where there was an involvement of a counselor. And at the time, we agreed that that, that the municipal solicitor would be the ideal person to work with council on investigations or hearing complaints or receiving complaints. So what you see before you highlight it in yellow is a provision for where there is an issue and a counselor is involved, either as the individual making the complaint or the individual who's named in a complaint, that everything would flow through the municipal solicitor, as opposed to the CAO or another member of council.
Go ahead, Counselor Cunningham.
No, I think that's a really good mechanism to deal with any issue that may arise with any of us or any future counselor. So the policy deals with that, and again, those are, can be sticky situations, and certainly staff, it's tough for our staff member, CAO, to deal with those types of things since we, the CAO reports to council, each and every one of us, so that's a, that's a good mechanism, and I think that we should move the policy forward to the regular council meeting for approval.
I agree.
That's what you, the counselors wish? 6.3. Request for grant funding Shark Scramble replica project. And you have that also in your package, 6.3.1, 6.3.2, as for information. Go ahead, counselor.
So I, as stated earlier, I will be declaring conflict of interest on this, so I'll be excusing myself.
So Mr. Chairman, this is, this application came in because the community group involved here have identified an opportunity to be involved in a project that's a late developing project. So this community group knows your normal annual schedule in terms of applying for grants. They would like to, if this initiative moves forward, they'd like to have this replica of this shark, it's a shark, yes, available for the event this year. So that's why it's a timely, it's a timely situation. Myself, I've noted that the prospective funders list is short. So a $9,000 project, and we're being asked for 1,500 of that. And if you look in the documentation, there are not a large number of partners that they're going to, and that's by design. They are approaching their typically largest funders to help support this project. If council was to receive a recommendation from committee, the whole, to fund this, it would come out of your grants contingency, which you have already dipped into once modestly.
What is the wishes of council? You've had the opportunity to read, like, say, the additional information and the financial information. They are basically on a break even with their, with their event every year and so on. I did have the opportunity to speak with Mr. Gable and so on, and realizing that it was a late request and so on. They'd like to be able to do it because this is a Canadian record, Mako shark. It has not been beaten anywhere since 2004. The shark was caught in 2004. If you read some of the areas or to the websites that you could go into, one I think was News Nova Scotia and so on, and the information that was in there on the shark, and how it's been viewed by people all over the world and so on. So that information was available to you and so on. So at this time, it's Counselor Cunningham, go ahead.
It seems like a, seems like a good project. Any, so the shark is going to be commissioned and made and so forth, a replica, and they're asking for $1,500 from Municipal District Yarmouth. I think that's a good use of money. My question is, so what happens to shark after the event? Can we put it on display, like, somewhere?
That's right. It's going to be, my understanding, where it's going to be placed is where it's going to stay.
Installed, yeah.
Installed.
And where?
And left on the waterfront.
Oh, left on the waterfront.
Left on the waterfront. I can't tell you exactly where. Yeah, be permanent. And then you could go and take pictures, et cetera, you know?
No, that's a.
And it's, it's a complete replica, full length, the weight, or not the weight, but the size and so on.
I think that's a, I think that's a really good, good concept, somebody can see that. So, yeah, in any event, I'd suggest that we, we fund that through our contingency.
Thank you. Counselor Durkey?
I think it's a really neat idea. What concerns me is when I look at the budget, the shark, the estimated cost was $3,400, and the shipping is $2,100 U.S. Can we not find somebody in Canada to recreate that instead of having to go to the U.S., or can they not?
That I couldn't tell you, Counselor.
And I'm wondering if that has been explored to find, I mean, there's some pretty amazing carvers around Nova Scotia. Could they not find someone to actually carve it, or is this a?
I believe, if I may, I believe this is all fiberglassed. It's not a solid, it's a fiberglass thing, and I'm going to, I can't speak for them, but I would have, I would have, I'll use that word, I would have thought that they would have checked out different places and so on and so on. It is high on the shipping. It's 11, the shark is 11 feet long, so your crate's probably going to be, what, 14 feet? And so that's quite a little bit in a trailer. I don't think it's, weight-wise, it's going to be a whole lot. It's just the bulkiness, height, thickness, and length, and they go by the cubic footage in a tractor trailer. It can be weighing one pound, but if it takes up a lot of space, you pay for the space.
Yeah, so, I mean, I think it's a great idea, but I have serious concerns about having to get it from the states, because the majority, a high amount of cost is actually just the freight and shipping. And I honestly would like to know if they've explored, if they've, Canadian, other companies to make this.
That would be info we could find out from them, or?
Yeah, we could absolutely find that out from them. I'm interested to know council's view, is there a better appetite for a project if they could find a Canadian vendor?
We'll explore that. Counselor LeBlanc, go ahead.
I don't know if this is, if they're still doing this, but I used to work for Alfred LeBlanc in Boston, when he had a, had a place in Boston, and many times, we would send some stuff, or people, friends wanted to send something, we'd send it with the, with one of Alfred's trucks back to Nova Scotia. I don't know if that, if that's something that they've explored.
Yeah, I don't know.
Something we can ask.
If there's many transports from the United States from this area here.
Counselor Cushing?
Yes, I, I think the project's a good idea. Yes, I understand that the shipping part of it is very expensive, but if, if it is not, even if it was done in Nova Scotia, the shipping charges would be not as much as they are here, but would be quite a bit. So even if you done it somewhere in Canada, from here, from, let's say, from Nova Scotia to Quebec, your shipping charge is going to be in that $2,000 range, it's just because of the space that it takes up.
Volume, yep.
Like the warden said, if it only weighs a pound, but it takes up, you know, 10 cubic meters or 10 cubic feet, that's what you're paying for.
Yes.
Yeah, and I would assume, oops, I would probably think that knowing Bob and his connections and whatnot, I would say probably they've, they've explored where else, where they could get this at a reasonable cost.
Counselor Cunningham?
So I was going to, I think Counselor Cushing's comments are good. I think this is a community group, and, and, I mean, anytime something's being bought from the U.S. or other than Canada, it is cause for concern. But at the end of the day, it's a late request. They're going to need the dollars soon to do this project, to get it, commission it and so forth, and get it done. And so, given all those things, and given that, you know, that I'm sure they've vetted and looked at options and so forth before coming to us, so for those reasons, I think that we should just move ahead with the project. And we can find out some of those, some of those pieces of information, you know, we can certainly ask, but I don't, that wouldn't, that wouldn't derail my support for, for the project. I think this is a governance body, so we're making decisions. It's not a huge ask. We're not spending a million or 1.5 million or anything like that where we have to get into the details. It's a $1,500 request, so I want to be careful about getting too far into the weeds with the group in terms of, not that we shouldn't know and ask questions, but I don't think that those things are going to, would sway my, would sway my opinion. I guess the important thing is the project gets done and that we've got a community group willing to put forward the effort to get that done, and that means a lot. That's a lot more than $1,500 to have people doing this, putting the event on for free, so there's a lot of volunteer effort and goodwill in it, so I'm 100% supportive of the, of the project.
Was there any other comments and so on?
When I'd spoken with Mr. Gable, he had mentioned that there was certain businesses and organizations in the area that have supported the Shark Scramble over the multitude of years, and that's why the list is short. These are the organizations that have, every year that they've had the Shark Scramble, have always been supportive of it, and they wanted, when the plaque is made, the list of the organizations that contribute to the replica will be listed onto it and so on. And I'm going back, I think, if you give me a second, I think it was in the financial information, or in the additional information, I'm not sure which one, that it gave information on the organizations somewhere here, I think it was. No, wrong one. It was in the financial information, I guess. There wasn't, the, the entrance fees, if I remember, they had 113 people, which is around $15,000, I think, where is it here? And maybe it's in the original information. And then the one, the industries that contributed to it was only around $12,000.
That's right. So the participants, the people who participate in the contest, they pay to do that, and it's just over $15,600, and the cash sponsorships are $12,700.
Yes.
So, you know, it is, it is by and large a user-pay activity.
Yeah. And what the different industry or the businesses that participate almost match, yeah, cash sponsorships and so on, was 12,700. So I think they wanted to try and show support or show appreciation to the industries that have contributed over the years. If, I think Counselor Cunningham and Trevor might remember, I think there was a year, a year when they didn't have the Shark Scramble, and then one year, it was late, and they came in, and the municipality seen the importance in it and went forward and supported them even though it was late and so on.
On that note, Counselor Trevor Cunningham.
Yes, Mr. Warden, I think, I think what we should do is, because we're in a committee of the whole session, maybe just take a poll, and I think it's a binary, I think it's a binary decision. We're going to either support this or not, so if we can get a majority of folks saying we can move ahead, I think, I think that gives direction to the CAO and one way or another.
Your thoughts on that, or is that a?
This is, this is a council decision, this is a political decision, but I do need clarity, because I've heard, I've heard important dialogue, so I do need clarity on whether or not it's your desire to move forward and support.
You go ahead, counselor.
I would support, support this.
Okay, to Counselor Trevor, your support?
I would support it.
Deputy Warden?
I'll support it, but I'm not sure that I would support it to the extent of their ask, but that could come up for debate in, in the regular council when we ratify. That's my only say. I have to think about this a little bit more.
Okay. Okay. Go ahead, Counselor Cunningham.
Mr. Warden, I don't think that was the question. I think the CAO is looking for direction today. It's not, my understanding is not going to regular council. My understanding is a question, binary, yes, no, for the $1,500. So my interpretation of that, and yours may differ, you're the ruling chair, is that council's approving of the $1,500 today.
You can buy consensus.
Yes.
And it's already an approved, it's already included in an approved budget, it's not new money, so it would just be, the direction is what line item it's coming out of.
Go ahead, counselor.
This is also time sensitive, isn't it?
It is, yes.
Yes, so I'm with Counselor Trevor.
Okay. Now, where this is a financial matter, council could, if you wish, do an in-camera. You could stop and go in-camera. Do you know?
I don't think it's a contract.
No, I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
No? Go ahead, counselor.
I think, I think it's clear, we, I mean, as far, I mean, we may want to do the poll again, but I think we've had four folks say, say yes, so.
It's a majority, so.
It's a majority, yeah. I think, I think the process is clear and the direction's clear, yeah.
Okay, so the direction is? No, it's been peaceful while he's been out, so, yes, have you noticed that? Please bring Dan back. 6.4. Mariners Center budget, you have that also, 6.4.1, the request for a decision. You also have that in your, in your package, and the request for a decision is the important information, and there's also a breakdown of that and the recommendation of the CAO. Well, there's two recommendations from the CAO, and I believe she's looking for some direction again on, on the request. Counselor Trevor Cunningham, go ahead.
Yes, so I'll just, I'll just read the recommendation to COA, which, C-A-O.
Yes, so I'll just, I'll just read the recommendation of COA, which, CAO, which I agree with fully. So I'd recommend that the committee of the whole recommend to council that the capital expenditure request of the Mariner Center Management Authority dated June 21, 2019 be approved and presented. And further, that Modi and the town of Yarmouth approach the municipality of Argyle to cost share in the door replacement project.
So, Mr. Chair, if I could, what that will mean is if Argyle has a favorable response to the door replacement project, the overall total capital spend by Modi on Mariner Center will be slightly less this year than what I've presented in the brief.
Yes. Deputy Warden, go ahead.
I have no problems with the roof repairs and stuff. The sliding door system, that will be replacing the swinging door system, correct?
Yes.
It will. And Counselor Allen, you jump in and fill in where I might leave blanks around the door project. So at the, at the Mariner Center Management Authority Board level, we've talked about the door project twice since I've been participating. And the issue is a security issue. Both doors have structural issues around them where we could be at risk for the, for the doors actually falling, falling out of the structure of the building. So we know, we know that there's an application for a project submitted, and we know there could be a major project take place on that site. But the, the chair of the board and the manager of the board conveyed to me, at least, I took it, that, that doing that door project is important for those structural reasons. Mr. Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Some of the structural issues are somewhat falling in, it's getting tougher and tougher to lock. But the swinging doors, as you can imagine, is the kids are going in with their hockey bags and stuff.
Dan, Dan, just a sec.
Yeah. The doors will take a lot of abuse from the kids and stuff going in with their hockey bags, parents with their bags, adults. And they're having a lot of, the structural issues are just getting worse. They're having a hard time locking them. Sometimes they can't lock them. They're hoping that replacing them with the sliding doors, the automatic sliding doors, so as, as people with their equipment approach, the doors open, there's no, there's no banging, no crashing. I'm not 100% sure, but I'm hoping that if there happens to be, and maybe, if there happens to be some type of renovation or expansion project, that these doors will be able to be reused. Did they bring that up at all?
No, that hasn't been discussed. But I think, you know, if the project moves forward, it would make sense that we would at least ask the question, can those be included in the new entrance system?
Yes, yeah.
I'm sorry. Counselor Cunningham, go ahead.
Yes, so whenever there's a safety issue, it's been brought up, we've talked about a safety issue. I think we need to act. And so it's kind of a good news story in a sense because that means the Mariner Center's been used a lot. And I've taken countless hockey bags through that door and I, through the doors. And I will say the swinging doors for, in my experience, are not the best option because they obviously swing. And there's, there are a lot of elderly people that, that visit the Mariner Center and watch the kids. And, you know, people going in and out, it's just, it's, it just happens. The doors do swing and they are heavy. And that does create, not only because of the structural issues, but it does create an inconvenient and maybe even a little bit, maybe even a little bit dangerous situation for folks that can't handle a big door and the wind's blowing and all that type of thing. And obviously, if you can't secure the facility, it's not, never a good thing. So I don't think that there's much choice but to move forward with the project. The, the proposed renovation is just that at this point. It's proposed, it's contingent on funding from provincial and federal partners, which we've gotten, we've gotten no word on that, whether that's going to proceed or not. We're hoping, hopeful that it will and fully supportive. But having said that, this is, I guess, just depreciation that's happened over the year due to, due to a lot of use. So, so I think, I think that we should move this request forward as circulated to, to regular council for approval.
Deputy Warden?
I don't know. That's, that's a lot of money for a couple of doors. The original door system was there, was, correct me if I'm wrong, put in there when it was built. They've lasted this long. And I do understand Counselor Cunningham's point about the request to expand the Mariner Center is, is, like you said, it's only a request, but there's still a chance that this is coming through. That's a lot of money to spend. And regardless, you put up a door, it's going to be kind of hard to take that door out and put it in another building or another renovated thing.
So I was just involved in a project in a different situation where we put commercial entry system, full glass commercial entry system, just two doors, both were 36 inches wide, swinging glass doors, and it cost us $12,000. So to think of 38.8 for two fully automatic sliding doors.
And an inside door.
And, you know, that meets an accessibility metric, too.
We talk about accessibility metrics, but also there's a push button to open those doors, correct?
Have you ever tried to use that?
Absolutely.
With hockey gear and kids in tow?
Absolutely. I haven't played hockey in a few years, but when I did play hockey, I used them.
So I know at this particular property, those buttons do not always work.
It, it, for me, it comes down to the point where there's a possible expansion. I'd like to wait. I'd like to wait to see where this possible expansion's going. And if it doesn't come through, then fine. I would have no problem with it, but.
So you're aware that we're saying we have trouble locking it and there's a possibility one of the doors is not structurally sound? You're hearing that, okay?
I am hearing that. And, but see, what you're doing is you're replacing a regular swinging door with the Cadillac of doors. And I know there's accessibility issues. I know we own it. I don't, I don't want to hear all that. It's just that it's an awful lot of money for something that we possibly could be expanding down the road quite soon. That's what I'm saying. I would much rather see that we replace them with the type that's in there now because they've worked this long. That's what I'd like to see personally. But I see that it looks like I might get pushed out of that. But I'm just expressing my opinion. Opinions are like belly buttons. Everybody has one.
Counselor Alwong?
John said what I, what I was going to say. But in saying that, how, is there an approximate time that we're going to hear about if we're going to get the money for an expansion? Could it be? Could we put a timeline, let's say, six months? If, if we don't hear it in six months, go ahead, put the, put the new doors.
So if we did that, that would mean we would be looking at working, putting our management authority in a situation where they're replacing door entrance systems in December and January? And it's freezing cold?
Yeah, I realize that.
Yeah, yeah. It is a difficult situation, there's no question about it.
Yeah. With the, with, if we do get the expansion, that's just wasted $39,000.
It's not just that, but let's say an expansion project does go forward. We are, we are years before shovels in the ground, right? There's got to be contracts, there's got to be designs, there's got to be a procurement process. So it wouldn't be this fiscal year, and it might not be next fiscal year before you actually get a shovel in the ground.
Okay. If, if it's a couple of years, two or three years before the ground is broken, well, I would agree to, to put new doors.
Counselor Cushing?
Thank you. Deputy Warden brought up a good point about them, them doors has been, the original doors have been there since they've been built. So to me, right now, we're talking about life cycle planning and whatnot. I think they've ended, they've been through their life cycle and it's to the end. As for the button, to push the button, so to make it accessible and whatnot. I know myself, even when we press the button here or press the button anywhere in the hospital, so the door's going to open, you have to wait. Whereas, whereas your sliding doors, when you get there, they open automatically. It's going to be much easier for, we're not really concerned about the athletes. We're more concerned about the accessibility part of it, to get in there, and the security part. As for spending the money on those sliding doors now, I mean, say, it's pretty hard, I think, to, to include them in a new expansion. Whenever, when and if ever that expansion comes, that can be written into the contract that these doors have to be used into the new design. Pretty straightforward. So I think we should just go ahead and do it because the doors have done their job over the years and now we're starting to move on.
Good point. Counselor Durkey?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. My philosophy is always do it right the first time. And we don't know yet that that door won't, won't exist even if we do have the expansion project. I mean, that, that still might be, as I recall in some drawings, I believe, original drawings, that I think that door still existed. But that being said, it can be reused. Safety first, as far as I'm concerned. And, and I know from also carrying babies in tow for mothers or for people in, in wheelchairs, that making it accessible without having to press a button to me is an advantage. So I would definitely agree with going ahead and getting it done.
Counselor Cunningham?
So, Mr. Chair, I guess we've got a suggestion to move this to council, is circulated, and recommendation to CAO. And I think the important piece for everybody to remember is there's a safety issue identified and there's a solution to that safety issue. And accessibility is a bigger and bigger piece of what we do, people expected of a public building. So for all those reasons, I think we should move it ahead to regular council for, for approval. And I'll just add, there's no worse place for us to be in than having somebody ask us the question. You had an opportunity to fix a deficiency that was publicly said to be dangerous. And having a door fall on somebody and injure them, we don't want that scenario for the municipality. And we don't want that scenario for any of our residents or any visiting people, that they'd be injured. And then they look back and we had the conversation about a structural possibility that the door would fail. It fails, somebody's injured, and we're in court, spending hundreds of thousands or millions of dollars on a, on a defense. So, I mean, if, if we can solve this problem here now in that council and get it ready for the upcoming hockey season, I think that's, that's the way to go.
That's the consensus, and I take it of council this time? At regular council meeting, Deputy Warden, you can have your thoughts recorded, sir. Item 6.5, Cape for Shu Master Plan Steering Committee. You have that in your package also, councilors? Status ad hoc committee of council. Read down through it to set up for the master plan at Cape for Shu. And towards, I, I don't know, the easiest way probably, instead of me going through it, would be to allow the CAO just to give you a quick briefing on that information.
So as I was reflecting on getting ready to go to market, to hire consultants to work with council on the development of that master plan strategically for Cape for Shu, I thought back to our strategy session, I thought back to conversations and correspondence. And council has always said that they wanted to meaningfully engage and provide a meaningful role with two, two groups in particular, YASTA and Friends of the Yarmouth Light. And there are individuals who currently work with those groups or who have worked with those groups in the past that could add, add depth and value to a steering committee who would work with the consultants as they move through a process of creating a master plan for Cape for Shu that would then be recommended to council. So I, I gave it some thought, you know, we don't typically approach work this way, although we did use the steering committee approach for the Mariner Center application, and it worked quite well. So I've, I've thought about, you know, who would be an ideal candidate? I've thought about, you know, what's the, what's the policy framework around this group? Who would this group be accountable to? Keeping in mind that we want it at right-sized so that there's enough voices around the table, but it's not too big so that we can't, can't keep moving ahead in the process. So I've included for you, in my view, who an ideal candidate would be. So either a current or former member of YASTA and a current or former member of Friends of the Yarmouth Light. And in either case, you know, we're seeking individuals who, in their service to the board, exhibited a passion for the advancement of tourism in Yarmouth County and sought to celebrate and promote excellent visitor experience while preserving the historical significance of Cape for Shu and the Leaf Erickson Trail. It's very important for us to remember that that is a registered heritage site and under our MPS and our LUB, that there are special, there are, there's a zone designated there, and we have planning issues that we need to respect as we move forward and grow opportunities at Cape for Shu. So my, my thought is, is it's about a six-month body of work to develop the plan with consultants and that we would want to strike the committee for six months or whatever period of time that strategy development takes, that the committee would report to council and that it would be guided by your policy on citizen appointments. Now, in that policy, we talk about advertising and we talk about terms. So because we want to generate interest in this quickly, we may want to use more social media, CJLS and our website to promote the opportunity as opposed to print media. And then sections five to eight talk about the term. And I would suggest that council would want to waive that because we're saying this is ad hoc. And then I've outlined what I think the appropriate duties are. So a role in evaluating proposals from consultants who want to do the work, recommend the successful proponent to council, and then engage with, with the consultants as they work through the process. Regular check-ins, this is a file that's of interest to everybody, council, to community groups, to citizens at large. And it's important that we have regular check-ins. There's an element in the development of the strategy that involves community engagement. And having individuals from those, those two groups participate on a steering committee will really help make sure that the engagement activities are meaningful to the people you're asking their opinion of. You know, we're in the business of public administration and we may, we may have one view on engagement. And somebody who's been involved in YASTA or Friends of the Yarmouth Light may have another view on how engagement is meaningful to the people you want to talk with. So input around that would be valuable. And then, of course, it would be the steering committee who would submit the final document to council as a recommendation.
What is the wishes of council? Comments, questions? Counselor Trevor Cunningham?
Well, I'm assuming just a, just a question. I'm assuming you're looking for consensus to move ahead today because you've got a July 26 deadline. So, I mean, I think it's work that's necessary. It would involve the community and, you know, I, I, there is, there is a history. Obviously, there's some, some issues at the light in terms of governance. We've talked about that before. But having said that, we'll need to move forward with, with community input. And we do need a strategy and a plan sooner rather than later. So I'm, I'm fully supportive of, of moving ahead in this, in this way.
Counselor Lauren Cushing?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. There's no question in any of our minds that the Cape for Shu Playhouse and Leaf Erickson Trail and the whole area is a iconic place for tourists and local people to visit. And to ensure that we don't stagnate ourselves into one particular venture, it's, this would be a worthwhile opportunity for us to, to expand our horizons. We noticed today with YASTA doing their presentation of the new website for the, for the Cape for Shu and whatnot, is very positive and very proactive. It's, so I think we're, we're going down the right path.
we're going down the right path, and let's continue doing that, let's make that area down there a, a, the, the best visitor experience that we could possibly do. And as our warden had said earlier about, said, mentioned it to YASTA, that, okay, you guys have done a great job yet now, but what are your plans on four months down the road, five months down the road? And this is how we, we grow. How do we, how we improve on things? So, I, I think it's a great step, and I think we definitely, definitely should move forward with it.
Any other comments or questions? I guess my question to the C A O, do you have what you need to move forward?
I don't think I have clear consensus. So we, we can do it one of two ways. I mean, I would like to get the R F P out there, but if, if the committee as a whole would like to take time and think about this, and move this forward to council, that's fine. But if there's a feeling amongst the seven of you now, that you like this approach, that you feel it's the, it's the right way to move forward, then by consensus, I can begin to put the plans in the works. And keep in mind, when people apply, it's council who vets the application, and it's council who makes the appointments.
Counselor Gerard LeBlanc?
Yeah, I like this, I'll, I, I would go along with this.
So, Counselor Daniel Allen?
Yeah, if you're looking for consensus, I would definitely be in agreement. I think one of our, one of our plans was to do some type of, yeah. Well, I guess this is exactly what we were looking at doing. We wanted a strategic plan for out, out to the, out to the light. That was our original, that was our plan when we started this season, so we have to move forward with it, we can't, this is a great way to move forward, can't stop now.
Any other comments, questions? Warden, Liam and Anthony?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In 2024, the, the Congress, the Acadian Congress is going to be here, and it was stated there this morning by, by Neil, that the lighthouse, the importance of when, I'm trying to think, which one came?
San Yves.
Yeah. At, at the Cape, and so on. So the, the lighthouse has some importance, and I think having a strategic plan with a long, a long-term focus, and that we can plan to work that in, and so on, the lighthouse could become a major part possibly of their plans, and so on. Major events being held out there, because that's where it all started, and so on. So I, I think this is the right step for the municipality, start moving forward, and so I fully support going forward, so.
Okay, from what I see, Madam C A O, you have consensus to move forward. All right, before we move on to item six point six, the addition, I'm going to relinquish the chair to the warden.
Six point six, events policy, Counselor Durkey, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to inquire about the events policy, which I, my understanding it, it has been in the works for about a year, but we haven't seen or had a discussion on that, is my understanding, so I'm just wondering where, where we are, and when that may be coming up. There's a big event in August, it's the Rock the Dock event, and I know that would have been important to that organization, to have that in place. I just, I have some information about the, apparently they've been working with Tourism Nova Scotia, and have some other big organizations involved in it. So I just, yeah, just wanted an update, and how soon can we can have a look at that?
Sure. So, the document has been worked and reworked at this, at the staff level. An invitation went out to council to participate in a bylaw committee meeting next week, I think it is, the seventeenth, where we're going to talk about, in particular, your, your council time and place policy. And what Darlene and I have developed for that meeting as well, is a list of all of the bylaws and policies that are on the docket, that you've asked to review, and we have put what we think we understand to be your priority on each one of those documents, and at that time, if we're, if we're not quite on the money with your priority, and in what order you'd like to see things come before you, then you can give us that direction at that time. So the festival and events policy right now, there's less demand coming from external people for that than there is for other things like the filming industry. So what we want to do is have a dialogue with council around, around that, and make sure that we're bringing to you what you want, when you feel it should come to you.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Sorry. I guess I keep thinking about the situation we're in right now, with the uncertainty of the, the ferry, and looking at tourism, and how they are trying to increase the, the festivals and events in order to try and bring people into the area, to generate more heads and beds, and more money in the area. So, that just, that's one of my ways I was thinking in terms of this issue that we're having now, that, you know, if we want to start increasing that, then that, maybe it should be more of a priority.
Well, and to be, and to be clear, there's a difference between not doing anything to prevent something, but creating a policy framework where you're saying, this is how you can do this here. One is passive, and, and one is more assertive, and so there is a very different tone in that.
I agree.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there any, anything else of council? Item number seven for information, the F C M Annual Conference and Trade Show 2019, that was for your information. There's a lot of good reading in there, and so on. I don't know if it would be prudent for this council to send a congratulatory letter to Counselor Bill Carson on being the, the president of F C M. Would that be, you know, along that lines? Is that a?
Um, I would have to, I don't think he's the newly elected president.
Yes, he is.
New, so he's, because he was the president when we arrived. No? Oh, okay, okay.
First vice.
Oh, he was first vice, okay, yep, so, yeah, yeah.
He's vice president?
Yep.
So?
Yep, whatever, yeah, wishes of council, for sure.
Is that what you guys would like to have? I, I've known Bill for, for a while, he's been, his information's in there, and so on, and, you know, in order to be an F C M representative, your municipal unit has to pick up the full costs of, of that representative, and you'll see that there is, that right now, there's two on there, Russell Walker and Bill Carson, but Wayne Mason, who is the president of N S F M, he's picked up by that organization, N S F M. They pay for him, but it's quite a costly thing, and when you go through the list of each one of the provinces, there, there's quite a few councilors that sit on there, and the municipal units pick up that cost. Counselor Cunningham?
So I, I think that's a good idea, but what I'll add in is, is I did attend the F C M session, there were many, many good sessions, and, and was very, very pleased that Counselor Bill Carston, our, our president. Having said that, there was another session where the Minister for Rural Development, the, she, she's an M P on the South Shore, Bernadette Jordan, yeah, she, she talked about, there was a question that came up, which I actually, I actually put forward through, through the technology and so forth, and it, and it rose to the top about rural airport infrastructure. So, obviously, we've got an airport here, and, and, and Yarmouth, that's, that could be utilized more, it does a lot of life flights, charters, there are, I think, about fourteen hundred touches a, a year, so that's pretty substantial. But, again, we're, we're, we're in, we're in need of some help there. There has been some discussion about federal funding for an airport, for, for the Cabot Links in, in Vernet, and I, I don't know the details around that, how worthwhile it is, but what I will say is, we haven't been able to access federal funding. I think that, in, in the letter, we should congratulate Mr. Carston, but also, and, and thank him for, you know, representing, putting his name forward to represent, you know, our, our voice at the national table, and I think it would be wise to, to underline some of the important things that the municipality, District of Yarmouth is looking for, and looking for his advocacy, and, and the airport would be, and, and ferry service would be front and center, and, and, you know, there, so I'll, I'll put that out there, and while I'm at it, I'd also suggest that we, we write Ms. Bernadette Jordan a letter also outlining, she's responsible for rural development, outlining the plight of our airport and the need for, for federal funding.
Okay. Do you have an agreement? Council's in agreement with that?
So two letters?
If I may, before, on the second letter to M P Bernadette Jordan, would it be, and I'm not sure, I, when she was made the minister, we sent her, I believe, a congratulatory letter. Would it be prudent for this council, because of the airport, the ferry, and so on, that if we invited her to come and meet with us, and we could have invite, once the date was set, invite the town and Argyle to sit and have a discussion with her, showing, you know, the importance, and we could have information pertaining to her airport, which she's probably well aware of through Colin, but sometimes, as, I think it was Counselor Cushion mentioned, or, no, Counselor Allen mentioned, communication, you know, face to face sometimes is, is really good, so.
When we sent the original letter of congratulations, we extended that invitation, but as you can imagine, being a newly appointed cabinet minister, there was a lot of demand on, on M P Jordan's time, Minister Jordan's time. So, you know, it never hurts to reiterate, you know, that open, that open door, make that request for dialogue.
Yeah. Deputy Warden?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I, I fully agree with Counselor Cunningham in what his statement was, in regards to the airport and the ferry, but one thing that also we should keep in mind is internet and cell service. There's a lot of federal initiatives out there. There's also a lot of provincial initiatives out there, there's been a lot of talk out there, but there's nothing been done out there.
I like that point. I like that point.
Here we are, still waiting.
So if you look at the resolutions at the F C M, and I pointed this out to Counselor Trevor Cunningham and Counselor Patty Durkey when we were there, I was, I don't know what the right adjective is, I was pleased with how well-aligned the municipality of Yarmouth is with the F C M. So if you look at the resolutions, they're talking about airports, they're talking about gender-based violence, they're talking about disaster mitigation and flood planning, they're talking about a broadband strategy, they're talking about housing affordability, and they're talking about rural economic development, you know, zero emissions buses. We are, we are walking step with step with the F C M, and that's important. They're our voice in Ottawa, so if we were to engage with the president of the F C M or Minister Jordan, it would be important to highlight how closely we are aligned with the F C M's resolution activity at this point.
Counselor Durkey?
I concur with my fellow councilors, and thank you, Warden Anthony, I think that's an excellent suggestion to have Bernadette come and sit with us and have a suggestion, have a suggestion, have a discussion about our direction, so thank you. Oh, and I also wanted to comment, since Trevor brought up about the airports, it's a huge issue in Cape Breton right now. I think there, there was a talk show this morning, in fact, about the eighteen million
Million.
Million that was being directed, possibly directed toward this airport, and it, it infuriates me that that's even a consideration, where we have the Port Hawkesbury Airport and our airport sitting here, where we would love to do what we can to develop it, but the finances just aren't available. And to, basically, to support, I, I mean, I understand, bringing lots of people, that the, the airport, by golf course would bring people in, but they're going to fly in and they're going to fly out, they're right there. So how is that going to be an asset to the rest of the communities around them, when they don't have to go anywhere else? So they spend their money in that one location, and they're done. So I totally disagree with, with the even consideration of an airport next to the, the Cabot Links right now.
Counselor Cunningham?
Sorry, I'm keeping on, we're, we're thinking as we go. It may be in that congratulatory letter to Mr. Carston, that we invite him down to talk about some of the issues, because he is our representative, we voted for him at, at the, at, you know, at, at F C M, and, and so I, I think it would be good. Also, read in the newspaper recently, there was a counselor, believe in Halifax, recollection, they were talking about a provincial airport strategy.
Yeah, Wei brought that up, yeah.
Yes, Wayne Mason?
Wei, yeah.
Yeah, Wei.
It's W A Y E.
Yes, Wei Mason, yeah. So, I, I, I think that would be a good thing, and we could advocate also through the, the Nova Scotia Federation of Municipalities, such a thing, moving forward, so, if it's okay with everybody, I think we should add an invite to, to Counselor Carson, who is our, our F C M president. I mean, what, what better time?
Well, yeah, we only have a year, so, and they can bring a lot forward, so. So that'd be the consensus and so on, okay? Counselor Cushion?
Thank you. I agree with Counselor Durkey on, on why have the airport up in, in Cabot Links, when the, the airport is in Port Hawkesbury now, it's only a forty-minute drive, and as a rule, when they do come into, to an airport for a golfing excursion, they, they do several different places at the same time, and I've, and I've, and I've suggested that several times, we should do the, one of those, to market our airport, that's one of the things we should be doing, bring a charter in, get them to play several holes of golf in the area, seafood, extravaganza, whatever, right, to bring people here, so it would be a great opportunity. If Cabot Links figure that they can get that kind of money to try to build an airport to, to benefit them, why in the, why in the heck can't we do that same thing here? Almost, so, anyway, that's my two cents.
Good point, Counselor, good point. Was there anything further on, on that one? Seven point two, N S F M Board Incentives Report, in there, what they, from last fall's resolutions and so on, there's information on the cap, E P R, and roads accessibility, the gas tech accessibility and so on, there is just information on there, asset management and so on. Again, I want to thank Counselor Cushion and staff for spending at least two hours on that project. I knew it was going to be busy, but I didn't know it was going to be as busy as that, you know, it'd say, so, thank you handling that, but, no, there, the meeting on, on Monday that we're having at council, I have a, a meeting in, in East Hans on Monday, and it pertains to, well, there's talk of E P R in there, and that's what the meeting is for me, on, so I won't be here on Monday afternoon, or Monday noon time, have to be there, because the, the provincial government is waiting on an efficiency study, and it's the, the committee that I chair that is looking after that efficiency study, and we've had a lot of issues trying to get information and so on, and we're hoping to, we're hoping this time, this will be the, I won't call it the last meeting, but that it'll be kind of pushed to the end of, on the E P R, so we can get it off to the provincial government, because that's the roadblock that they're holding up in front of us right now to move forward on E P R. And, was there any other questions or anything on N S F M's initiative report? Hearing none, then I guess consensus to adjourn? Is that in order? Thank you.